An excused absence, so Madam City Manager, are you ready?
I think I am.
Our wonderful City Attorney, are you ready?
I am.
Okay, we'll go ahead and get started. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the November 24, 2015 meeting of the McMinnville City Council. What we'd like to do is at this time, by call order, I will ask Counselor Hill to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please. Scott?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Scott. This is a time, one thing I'd like to bring up is, we do have since our meetings are both being video recorded for broadcast on McMinnville Community Media, both on Frontier and Comcast, and they're being streamed live over the Internet by KLYC. What I would ask is if you do have a cellphone, that you please turn your cellphone or set your cellphone to silence at this time, and during the meeting at any time you refrain from texting, either receiving or sending texts, or performing any activity on your cellphones, and if you do need to make an emergency call or anything, we ask that you please go out in the lobby and do so, so we can keep the meeting running along. So this is the time we like to reserve for citizens to come speak to the council on anything they would like to. There are some exceptions to what we can take testimony on, and when we ask that if the topic is already on the agenda tonight, that you wait until that topic item to provide your comments. If the city's currently in a matter of litigation on any issue, we cannot take any testimony on anything that the city is currently in litigation in, or if it's a quasi-judicial land use matter, such as a zone change, or a matter scheduled for a public hearing at some future date, you will be told that it is more than likely there will be a public hearing, or there is going to be a public hearing scheduled, and we will not be able to receive any testimony on that. And of course, I will always limit, have the right to limit those comments in length and scope of those comments. It's not very often I have to do that, but I retain that right to do that for respect of the council and the council's time. So that being said, is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak to the council on anything tonight? Okay. JW, why don't you come forward, and again, you know the routine, state your name and record verbally for the, or name and address for the record, and then sign in, please.
Okay. My name's JW Milligan. I reside at 624 Northeast Second Street, which is, what, four blocks from here. My office is a block and a half from there. And hopefully, I'll start to get more involved after sitting in the back of the room for quite a while. I did give you a letter, these are just some comments. If I could read some of this. Citizen involvement, participation, and transparency are hallmark of our city government. Since coming back to McMinnville, I've observed that McMinnville is a very compassionate, engaged, involved community. City has grown threefold, and is facing more growth ahead of it, which requires more effort to make sure that the city remains engaged with all members of our community. I have two suggestions. These are small ones. One, that improvements be made to the city's online calendar of events, and that the various subcommittees be encouraged to engage citizens on a more regular basis. The first suggestion involves making the online calendar, which I go to a lot, actually list all the city meetings. It includes links to the detailed agendas and background material. For example, currently, the calendar lists the city council and the airport commission, which I missed, but not the planning commission. In addition, while the agenda is linked, none of the background material is available. And it'd be very helpful for citizens to have all that right there. The second suggestion involves encouraging the various subcommittees to take the initiative to engage the community on a regular basis. As an example, the Landmarks Commission and the Citizens Advisory Commission rarely meet unless there's an issue. As a city grows, it needs to become more proactive regarding the city's historical character, for example. Growth demands we pay attention to our historic fabric if we want to protect the elements of the community that we love. Currently, our historic inventories are over 35 years out of date and inaccurate, and the ordinances which regulate these resources are incompatible and possibly ineffective in today's environment. These issues demand a proactive look before we find ourselves in a crisis mode. I didn't keep it to one page. I understand that city resources and staff time is limited. Improving the online resources and expanding the committees we have need not require more staff or city resources. Once you inform and empower people, they can find the resources to tackle problems. For example, use myself as an example, as a volunteer with no use of city staff or resources, I led the effort to establish Salem's first historic district, which by the way, eventually, by doing a neighborhood group, it eventually got to the city council with no opposition. Originally, the newspaper opposed us till we had a meeting with them. And then also the Alphabet District in Portland. McMinnville has the citizens that can make similar commitments. To give you an idea of whether proactive is important, what I see from my knowledge, in Salem, we did a proactive thing on a historic district. There was no controversy, there was no demolitions or anything of that nature. The Alphabet District in Portland, in northwest Portland, was a resort, a result of my entire board being arrested in front of bulldozers. I was not arrested because someone had to bail them out, but I would rather see us make decisions and review things when you don't have to stand in front of bulldozers, because the more you inform your citizens, the more they're engaged, the better community you have. So I just, it was my two cents. I had talked to Mayor Olson at a meeting here recently about this.
Any questions for JW?
Just going with our website.
Yeah, one of the things you might be interested, you might have already saw JW on the agenda tonight, one of the things is to implement a resolution to provide a contract to a group out of Lake Oswego. We, the city has, is getting ready to begin, we've actually been working on undertaking to redo our complete website to more modern technology. It'll be led by Scott Burke over there, and one of the things we'll be doing is making it more of a user-friendly, information-filled website, and the company that we have chosen out of all the applicants we had deals with a lot of municipalities, a lot of counties. So I think in the next, within the next six, seven months, as we go on, you'll see a lot of improvements, and I think one of those will probably be to the online calendaring and the information availability and everything. So we do have a thing in front of us tonight to actually start that work.
Okay, well, thank you.
You betcha.
Thanks for your time.
Thanks, JW. Okay, next, come on forward again, we'll ask you, we know you are, but we'll ask you to sign in again and state your name and address for the record.
Hello, my name is Mercedes Chavez. I live at 2161 Northeast Lafayette Avenue here in McMinnville, Oregon. And I want to start by thanking all of you for your work and your commitment to be here and to listen. Thank you very much. So I spoke last time about very serious issue regarding my own stability here in the community, and that is, of course, financial. You could say security. You know, do I feel safe? And am I being respected in the community? And so, rather than be upset or, you know, have an incoherent energetic explosion on you guys, I thought I would approach this with some researches that I've found. And basically, you know, as I went through the process that you all, you know, have set forth, and I followed it, I attempted to talk to the Chief of Police, I attempted to talk to the officer, I attempted to talk to the City Manager, I've attempted to talk to everyone. Everyone so far has refused to meet with me, so...
Can I interrupt for a minute, Mercedes? I want to make sure something is very clear. I understand, now unless I'm wrong, that you did meet with the police chief.
No one has met with me, sir.
Have you seen the video of the...
No one has met with me, sir.
Yes, I'd like our City Manager to address that.
Mercedes called me, and as I told her, I said that, you know, first I wanted her to talk with Matt Scales, and she said that she couldn't get in to see Matt Scales, so I said, okay, call in 60 minutes, no, I'll handle it in 60 minutes. I talked with Matt and said directly, Matt, can you please make time for Mercedes? And he said, yes. Did you call Matt back to make that appointment?
I was told I would be called, and no, I didn't.
No, I said, you needed to call Matt back, and I gave you the phone number, and then I said, after that, if you and Matt still disagreed, then you could come talk to me.
Well, I do have his phone number, and my request to see him has been ignored, so...
But did you call him back? Did you call him back as you were...
Yeah, that's what I'm asking is, because I said, I know, because I told him specifically, and he's waiting for your phone.
Yes, I have called him. I have. It's on my phone records. So basically, what, this is, this is what my research has shown me, that, okay, so I'm traveling along the road, I'm not hurting anyone, therefore, there isn't a victim to me making a turn and my tire touching a line. There's no one being damaged. So I asked Rose if I could present this, because it's all there, it's not my work. I'm basically calling for help to the entire universe to please guide me, because I need a lot of guidance. And so this information came to me, basically, it's been upheld by higher, lower courts that if there is no victim, then there is no crime, and I don't owe a debt for my tire crossing a line. And I'm sure that this doesn't make a lot of sense to most of you, because I've lived a completely different life here in this town that I think most of you aren't aware of. But the police in this town have harassed me, and it's on record that I filed complaints. I filed complaints to the previous police chief. He refused to meet with me. I mean, this isn't new to me, that no one's wanting to talk with me, so I am, by my spirit, I am being told, come here, talk to you guys, let you know what's going on. And that's it. That's basically it, is that I love my community, I'm trying to be the community, you know, get involved, you know, know what's going on, and that's being met with, you know, why? Why? I don't understand. I know you don't know me, but some people here in this town do, and they think I'm okay. In fact, they have met with me. The sheriff has met with me. Sheriff Crabtree has met with me. So I know, I know it's not, you know, I'm just trying to figure out how I can get involved in this system of policy to procedure to practices that the police end up, comes down on me, okay? I'm telling you, my rent, my bills, my health, you know, I have to stand up for myself and assert my rights, and I do not consent to being told that I owe a debt that I do not owe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mercedes. Moving on, anybody else who'd like to speak to the council on anything tonight? If not, let's go ahead and move on. We'll move on to the...
We had somebody...
Oh, excuse me, come on, come on forward, and again, sorry, I missed you, sign in and state your name for the, names for the record, and your addresses, please.
Can I go first? They're actually on the...
Oh, you're on the, you are, you guys are on the...
Are on the agenda, so I'm confused. Do you want us to wait?
Yes, wait till, wait till we get to our... I thought it's, you, I thought you were going to come and speak on what you were going to speak on, and not something else. It's all right, Susan, that's fine. Anybody else like to speak? We'll, we'll make sure you know when it's your guys' time. Okay, anybody else like to speak to the council on anything? If not, let's move forward, then, councilors, in your pack are the minutes of the September 2000, or September 22, 2015 work session and regular meeting. And if there's been no corrections or modifications, I'll entertain a motion that we approve the minutes of the September 22, 2015 city council...
So moved?
Meeting. I have moved by Counselor Hill, seconded by Counselor Minky. All's in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that the minutes of the September 22, 2015 work session and regular meeting have been approved. That will take us to new business, and the first thing under new business is a thank you from Henderson House. Savina, would you like to come forward, please, and bring, bring all of your people with, bring all of your people with you? You're going to sit back there, huh, Linda? Like a good, like a good Oregon State graduate? Okay.
This is Savina Falkwiss. She's the Executive Director of the Henderson House Family Crisis Shelter. Chris Rogers from Rogers and Rogers Construction, and myself, I'm Beverly Knutts, a board member for the Henderson House. And we're here to personally thank you, the City of McMinnville, for all you have done to help the family crisis shelter, better known as Henderson House, throughout the years since it opened back in 1981. Most especially, we want to thank you from the bottom of our hearts for the work you've done in the last several months to get us to have grant deed title to our facility. That's very, very thankful. The board and staff of Henderson House have had a dream to be able to expand our shelter facility, and to also begin a program to have a facility that allows our clients to live in transitional housing. And with this deed title that you've granted us, we now can realize that dream. Thank you so much, Mayor Rick Olson, to Kevin Jeffries, Kelly Minky, and Larry Yoder, Scott Hill, Remy Drapkin, and Alan Rudin, I see is missing, but thank you all so much for making this happen, and especially Martha. I would also like to thank a few other individuals that have done work for us in the past to get us to the place where we are today, and I want to start with Walt. It was you and your wife Shelley who, back in about, I think it was 1988 or 87, you were looking for a home for yourself, and you ran across this facility that you knew we were outgrowing our old shelter, and that it would work just perfect for our needs. And thus, we're on that perfect fit of having a shelter that worked for 25-odd years. We now move forward to 19, 2000, or 1989, I think it was then, that we got a federal HUD block grant, community Oregon block grant, and so many individuals at that time, the mayor, Ed Gormley, and Rick Highsmith, they worked, the judge, or I think it was Walt, or Ron Stone was still attorney then, working to help get us that grant. And we took possession of that facility in 1989. Now we move forward to 2015. About five months ago, Chris and Savina and I were meeting at the shelter to plan remodeling projects to make that work out for hopefully maybe another 10, 20 years. And that got us into a discussion of how could we best work this out, and Chris came up with approach, he said, why don't you approach the city and see if they'll get us clear title to this property so that we can move forward? And Matt just launched our eyes, and we thought, oh, okay, we're going to get going forward. So Savina made appointment with Martha, and Martha, you just cleared the way for this, and it's just, we just thank you so much. And so Savina has something here that she...
Yeah, and I want to say, this is over 25 years of dedication, volunteer time, amazing. And I'm only a year into it, so it's lots of, lots of experience, and I just learned some new stuff, which is really cool.
I just want to say really quickly, this is really important to me. It really does take a whole community to make things happen, and if Chris wouldn't have sparked the conversation, it wasn't even in our, it wasn't even in our...
Yeah.
And he said, what's the worst they can say? No. And I'm like, well, you're absolutely right, so let's do this thing, right? And so what I'm going to present is this, this is a drawing of what we're doing, we're having a piece commissioned for you guys, and it's a three-foot soft lay, and it's a local artisan, and so this is the design of what he's going to be doing, and it's pretty intricate, so it's going to be a couple of months before the work will be done, but we wanted to get this to you so you kind of have an idea of what's coming.
Savina, that's really cool.
And we really do appreciate it. We're very excited. It's really opened the doors for people in our community who need research and stuff. Thank you very much.
Thank you. While you're all up there, we have any questions from Savina or anybody else?
I can tell you that I think it's more our privilege of working with you than it is your privilege of working with us. I think this is the kind of things that government is really expect to do and should be doing, and to us, Henderson House and all of our partners are very important to maintain the livability of McMinnville and make sure that people get the care and treatment they need in McMinnville, and I think Henderson House is just a very, very wonderful example of that, so we're glad we were able to do what we were, and we know that no matter how long we'll outlive, probably all of us are councilors up here at the time on the council, but we have a very good feeling that Henderson House will continue on and will only get better, and it's been great all along, so thank you. And when we get, when we get with this, and then when we get that, we'll make sure that we have a very prominent, prominent place to display it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now, our next item is Susan. If you and Brian want to come forward, again, what we'll do is we'll ask you to sign in and state your, state your address, and we, it is now your, it is now your time.
Oh, I can hardly wait.
Yes. We always look forward to seeing you, seeing you anyway.
Thank you. Well, here, I'll write really fast. I'll do the address part later. Okay. Good evening, Mayor Olson and councilors.
Can we get you to move the microphone a little bit more towards you, Susan?
Toward me? Is that better?
Yeah, that's better.
Okay. Shall I say it again?
If you want to.
Good evening, Mayor Olson and councilors. My name is Susan Meredith, and I reside at 14100 Southwest McCabe Chapel Road in McMinnville. I am also a board member of the Stop the Dump Coalition. I greatly appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight about the Jinger Hydrology Report on Riverbend. First, I'll give you a little background. In 2010, Tim Steber, the former Executive Director of the Yamhill County Soil and Water Conservation District, decided to review the 2009 DEQ Annual Monitoring Report for Riverbend. These annual reports include the results of groundwater test well sampling, which is conducted by SCS Engineering, a Portland consulting firm hired by Waste Management. The data in these reports are public information and are available on the DEQ website. In his review, Mr. Steber noted several points in the groundwater test well data that raised his concern and suggested that we have these reports analyzed by a professional landfill hydrogeologist. At that point, as a scientist with a degree in biochemistry, this issue sparked both my interest and my concern. Now, fast forward to June 2015, when Stop the Dump Coalition hired Mark Jinger Associates, an Oregon professional landfill hydrogeology consulting firm, to review the 2013 and 2014 annual monitoring reports for Riverbend. Additional historical Riverbend documents were also reviewed at DEQ headquarters in Portland. The results of that comprehensive review and analysis are summarized in the Jinger Report. The Jinger Report was submitted to the DEQ on July 31, 2015. To date, DEQ has not responded to repeated requests regarding the Jinger Report, except to state there is, quote, "currently no permit violation or any reason to question the management practices at Riverbend," end quote. Before we look at a few of the specific issues raised in the review report, we should look at a map of the site and note the locations of the wells that were highlighted in this report. I've given you a copy of two-page map here. The first one, you'll notice I've marked in yellow the South Yamhill River. It's the blue course at the bottom. Cells 1, 2, and 3, which are marked in the middle up here, you can hardly see it, but that's the location of cells 1, 2, and 3. The monitoring well 5A, which is very near those three cells, right on the edge of them, and the compliance wells MW12A, MW14A, MW16A, and MW21A. These wells are all highlighted because all report, because each of these report elevated levels of organic or inorganic contaminants in the groundwater. I should explain that a monitoring well differs from a compliance well, and a monitoring well is the canary in the coal mine. The, oops, what's... The compliance well, however, is a second level of detection and is the, the well that is used to signal that there might be a permit violation if the site-specific limits of the content, of the compounds being tested are being exceeded. Oops, let me see here. I think I've turned too many pages. Now locate the, now note the locations of cells 1, 2, and 3, and those wells that are identified in the Jinger Report relative to their location to the river. You'll see that they're all very close. On the next page of the map, on the next map page, you'll see that all the slope lines point down gradient toward the river. Now you'll recall that the Jinger Report points out that highly elevated levels of three volatile organic compounds, which are toxic to human and animals, were present in the monitoring well MW5A as early as 1992, when this well was installed. This well is very close to the river and is down gradient from cells 1, 2, and 3. These three original cells were constructed and opened in the early 1980s, and they have problems. The most significant of these is they are lined only with clay soil, which was legal at the time, but these do not have synthetic liners that have been required by landfill, at landfills by EPA since the late 1980s. And due to the high contamination levels of toxic organic compounds at MW5A in 1993, a remedial investigation was conducted at Riverbend by MCON. The report, based on this investigation, notes there were construction problems with these three original cells, which included a lack of quality control data, inadequate compaction of the clay soil liner, and the absence of a leachate collection system at the bottom of cell 1, because this cell was already being filled when the leachate collection system was being installed. The lack of a leachate collection system in cell 1 has allowed leachate to pool at the bottom of cell 1 for more than 30 years. Furthermore, during the rainy seasons, the excess rainwater penetrating the landfill flushes the decomposing waste. All of these factors are a recipe for leachate leaking from the three original cells into groundwater and flowing down gradient into well MW5A and on down toward the river. Thus, the Jinger Report states that, quote, "The remedial investigation in 1993 should have concluded that leachate was leaking from cells 1, 2, and 3, and was a likely source of the volatile organics in that well. However, it did not. Only landfill gas and not leachate was targeted for remediation at that time, and a landfill gas extraction system was installed in 1997." Currently, there are more than 200 gas extraction wells at the site, which have significantly reduced, but not eliminated, the elevated levels of organic toxins in the groundwater at MW5A. And recently, in a phone conversation with Sherry Matheson, the Yamhill County Solid Waste Person concerning MW5A well contamination, Bob Schwartz, the DEQ permit engineer for Riverbend, told her, and I quote, "The MW5A well has presented questionable data for a variety of reasons, and DEQ has placed greater emphasis on nearby wells it believes to be providing more useful and accurate information," end quote. So I have to ask, how is it that DEQ can simply decide to ignore data that provides evidence that leachate is leaking into MW5A and likely into other wells also? Repeated requests for a response, for, sorry, for a copy of the DEQ staff... Repeated requests for a response, for, sorry, for a copy of the DEQ staff report supporting such a decision have had no response. Furthermore, if the MW5A well is indeed faulty, and especially due to its important location so close to the river, why hasn't MW5A well been decommissioned and replaced long ago? Again, no answer from DEQ. So, where are these toxins going after they flow past the monitoring well and compliance wells and on down gradient toward a river from which the local farmers draw irrigation water for food crops? These compounds do not simply disappear from the groundwater into thin air. They are going somewhere. The question is where? Additional and definitive evidence that leachate is in fact leaking into the groundwater is the presence of elevated levels of the seven organic, sorry, inorganic leachate indicators in several groundwater test wells. These inorganic compounds cannot be extracted by the gas well collection system because they are not volatile. The trend analyses included in the Jinger Report show that currently, one of these inorganic leachate indicators is already exceeding its limit in the compliance well MW12A, located down gradient from MW5A, and two more are rising steadily. In addition, several other compliance wells, including MW14A, MW16A, and MW21A, also show significantly increasing trends of inorganic leachate indicators. These trends were not identified in the 2014 Annual Monitoring Report prepared by SCS Engineering for Waste Management. Finally, based on DEQ's data, the Jinger Report definitively concludes that leachate is leaking from the decomposing waste and not just landfill gas is impacting the groundwater at Riverbend. Prior to consideration of a permit to expand Riverbend, the Jinger Report states, DEQ should require a remedial investigation into the release of leachate from the older unlined cells. Again, we have had no response from DEQ, and the pollution continues unabated. Unfortunately, trying now to identify what additional hydrology problems could result from the expansion is not possible, except to say that with 12 more years of millions of tons of waste being placed on the site, there will be millions more gallons of leachate produced each year from an expanded site. In 2014 alone, 32 million gallons of leachate were removed from the landfill by tanker trucks. One also must recognize, when the big one, the 9.0 or greater magnitude earthquake that is projected for this region occurs, it will destroy the leachate collection and gas collection systems at Riverbend. At that time, leachate volumes will exceed capacity of the leachate pond and lead to a massive spillover, which will eventually reach the river. This will result in unprecedented high levels of pollutants in the river and prevent its use by the public or farmers. In closing, I would like to leave you with one final thought, an excerpt from the 1993 Declaration of a Global Ethic. "We are interdependent. Each of us depends on the well-being of the whole, and so we have respect for the community of living things, for people, animals, plants, and for the preservation of the earth, the air, the water, and the soil. We take individual responsibility for all we do. All our actions and failures to act have consequences." Thank you very much for your attention and interest in this matter.
Thank you, Susan.
I'm Brian Doyle. My address is 24001 Northeast Ellis Lane in Newburgh, and I'm a member of the Board of the Stop the Dump Coalition. And I want to talk a little bit about seismic issues. I think you have in your packet a two-page or a page and a half summary that I wrote. I'm not going to read the summary. I'll try to, to speak off the cuff. So, I want to speak about seismic, and by way of background, Susan mentioned the earthquake, which is coming. We don't know when, but it will be upwards of magnitude nine or possibly greater. It will go on for three, four, or five minutes. It's an earthquake of greater magnitude and duration than anything the continental U.S. has experienced in, in our, in our history. The last one was in the year 1700, when there was no one around. The concern here is the soils underneath the landfill and the stability of them. The state has categorized this whole area as moderately susceptible to liquefaction. Liquefaction is what happens during an earthquake when you have unsettled soils, e.g., typically sands or sandy soil, that isn't really compacted. Sands that were deposited some eons ago but have never fully settled. And when you, you know, they seem to be firm when everything is still, but when you vibrate them, all of a sudden, it's like liquid. You step on them, you just sink. The, there's been a problem in earthquakes in, under, in cities. When you put a building up and put weight on top of this liquefiable soil that's down there somewhere, and the earthquake comes along, all of a sudden, the liquefaction happens, and the building settles, or maybe one side of it settles, and the building tips over. And it's also associated with, with spreading. That is, if you've got on the edge of the seashore or on the edge of a riverbank or someplace the river's cut, cut through, you can end up with a whole section of land sliding off because it's basically resting on liquid. Sand, the sandy liquefiable soils during earthquake, because of the additional pressure of the structure above, may boil up someplace. Sand boils. Well, now we have the landfill, and that's pretty heavy. It's 150 feet tall. That's a lot of weight there. And our concern is, are there liquefiable soils underneath? And the answer is, we don't know. Now, when Waste Management applied to build the berm, which is currently finished, I believe, and increased their capacity, it's a retaining wall. It's 40 feet tall. It allowed them to fill in against it and continue filling at Riverbend for two years, an additional two years of capacity. We were suspect of the modeling they did to say that that retaining wall would survive an earthquake. The concern was, you know, the retaining wall's there, the landfill is, you know, the waste is pushing against it. Will it stay there? Or if there are any unstable soils underneath it, will it just be like a landslide and kind of slide out and go away? The other thing that, that would happen to the landfill, and Susan mentioned this, is that the landfill, except for the first three cells, is built with plastic liners, synthetic liners underneath. There are two of them. The first one is supposed to prevent any water from leaking through into the ground, and the second one's supposed to catch whatever does leak so that it can be pumped out. Well, if the land settles, and it would settle unevenly, it wouldn't be the whole landfill. It'd be here, there, and everywhere, and we don't know, we don't know what's going to happen there. But if it's, if there are these unstable soils underneath of it, and we get this differential settling, those liners are going to be ripped. They won't be liners anymore. There's no way to repair them. You can't dig down through 100 feet of waste and, and repair the liner. Well, yeah, you could take the whole landfill away to fix it. So, it's unreparable. If it, if, if, if there are unstable soils there, and we have an earthquake, there is likely to be damage to the liners, likely damage to all the piping that's there that sucks out the water, the leachate, and the gases. So, there's going to be probably unreparable damage to it. Well, when they were, when they applied for the berm, we looked, we tried to look at the, the engineering, the calculations. We hired a firm to give us an assessment. They had some problems with it. We submitted that to DEQ. DEQ had their consultant, their consultant refused to reject anything. They weren't really happy with the analysis that Waste Management presented, but they said there's nothing there that kills the deal. And Bob Schwartz, in a conversation with them, said, "Well, it's two to one in favor." Okay, so, the, DEQ went ahead and permitted the berm. Subsequently, we asked our engineers to take another look. We asked them the question in a different way, and they went through the standard analysis, the accepted way of analyzing, is this, given the information about the underlying soils, which was rather unlimited and complete, but given that information and all of the other inputs that Waste Management used, they used the standard ways of analyzing it, the accepted ways of analyzing it, and they came up with unacceptable results. There were two or three different ways of approaching it, and that's normally expected because there's so much uncertainty in figuring out whether or not it's going to be stable or so, so little experience in this whole business, you know, landfills on top of unstable soils. Anyway, the, the result by Kleinfelder was that, you know, using any of the standard methods of analysis, the deformation, the movement of the landfill is expected to be anywhere from 20 to 60 inches. The maximum acceptable was 10. What had, how had Waste Management got by? Well, they hired the biggest, the most famous guru on, on, on the subject, and he came up, he cooked up a unique method of analyzing, and nobody was willing to challenge him because he's the biggest guy in the field. So, they cooked, they basically hoodwinked the DEQ with their, with their analysis to show that it would be okay, when in fact, all the standard analysis said it wouldn't be. After that, we, I mean, we anticipated there's going to be more applications. We hired, and I should say at this point, when that report came out from Waste, from Kleinfelder, we were starting to have them do more work for us, and they came back and said, "Well, we've been told by the top brass that we can't work for you anymore because it's, we might lose some work for Waste Management." So, we had to find another engineer, and we found engineers in Southern California. And we asked them if it was California had been asked to permit this Riverbend landfill, what criteria would they use? Can you write us a guidance document? And they did, and we submitted to DEQ and says, "If you, we're in California, which has a lot more experience with this sort of analysis. Here is the way, here are the criteria that would be used to assess the application for an expansion of the landfill." And so, we gave, we, we gave it to DEQ, and I think DEQ has used it because the, all the feedback we get says they're taking this application much more seriously, and they are looking much, much harder at the, the soils underneath the expansion area. And at a meeting in September, a public meeting, their Waste Management's top guy on seismic, Hari Sharma, was there, and I asked him about, you know, the soils and, you know, under the expansion area, and he says, "Well, yes, there are some unstable soils, some liquefiable soils." "Oh, yeah, really? We didn't have any when you did the berm, but now in that 27-acre, you know, adjacent area, you've got them." And he says, "Yeah, we've got some, and we also have some under the berm, the existing berm, not the new berm, the existing old berm that goes around it. They're going to be expanding, they're going to be growing it." And he said, "But we're going to take care of that. We're going to drill down." They have something called deep soil mixing, a great big, you know, six-foot diameter auger that they bore down and they mix, I think it's basically cement with the soil, and essentially create a, a kind of a cement soil column, and they do this, you know, repeatedly, and they're going to do that all under, in all the areas where they found these liquefiable soils underneath. Well, first of all, now we have liquefiable soils on that site, on the expansion area and adjacent under the berm. I've got a couple of problems with that. One is just the method of, you know, these deep soil mixing. Now, it's, it's a well-established method, but it's meant for supporting the weight of a building. You bore down, you make a column. It's like a, you know, a piling, a drill down. But the issue here is not just the weight, the weight on the new expansion landfill, it's the push, the lateral push, the sideways push on the berm. How good are these things, this, this technique at resisting that sideways push? And I, I'm not sure that technology's that well-established. Hart Krauser, who is the consultant for Waste Management, has told me, "Yeah, you can do that." Okay, they're the experts. The second issue I have is, well, if we've got all these unstable soils, evidence of unstable soils right adjacent and along the side of the landfill, what about underneath the existing landfill? In 1993, when the federal government passed the regulations for Sub-Titled D landfills, they said, "Landfills on unstable soils shall be closed unless the operator can demonstrate that they are structurally sound." That was targeted at Florida, where they have karst soils, K-A-R-S-T. Karst soils result in these sinkholes that abruptly appear and dry, you know, houses and people fall into them. We don't have karst soils, but we do have liquefiable soils. We do have unstable soils, and so the regulation really applies to those. So, the reality is, although we only know now that we have unstable soils, the reality is the landfill should have been ordered to close in 93. They had five years to close, and there really shouldn't have been any more waste put on top of that without stabilizing the whole thing. So, now we've got the expansion application. The regulations also say that when you're expanding landfill, you don't have to retrofit the existing landfill. But we have a landfill that probably was filled in violation of the regulations ever since 1993. Most of that landfill is built on, probably built on unstable soils. That's kind of a legal issue, I guess. When it comes to the DEQ, I think we're going to be ending up with experts on each side conflicting, and, and in that battle, the, the experts or the, the side with the most money wins. So, I'm expecting that Waste Management will somehow demonstrate that everything is okay and convince DEQ to issue the permit for the expansion, which means if, you know, if the plans for expansion are going to be interrupted, it's probably not going to happen with DEQ. It's going to happen with one of the other permitting parties, and prime among those is the county. So, we really appreciate your stand with the berm opposing it, and we're hoping that you will weigh in with the county once again, because we really believe it's, that there is an environmental threat there, and expanding the landfill further just, it really doesn't make any sense.
Gabe, do we have any questions? I'll start with you. Did you have, did you have a question, I think, Kevin? Let's start with you. Did you have a question or a comment you wanted to make, I believe?
Yeah, just, I have a question and a comment. My comment is, thank you for being here and for sharing this information. Calling this as a summary, I'd hate to see the full document because it's, it's quite lengthy, and so I really appreciate your, your, you know, your expertise in helping us understand this a little bit better. And I, I want to make the suggestion, I don't know how, how much you've gone down this route, but it, there sounds like there needs to be some legislative fix to some of these issues, especially given DEQ's lack of response to some of these things. And I would be happy to go with you to Salem, introduce you to some legislators, and, and I've seen the smaller issues get, get hearings in committees, and I think this is the type of thing, this has, this has regional significance to Oregon, and we have legislators who need to hear this. And if DEQ isn't paying attention to this, if we can get a committee meeting to talk about this, DEQ will be there, and they will have to respond. And I, and I really want to get behind you and help you to make that happen.
Thank you so much. I, I have to say that two of our members have, but it's been a couple of years ago, met with legislators that were then in office. One of them has changed, and without any interest or response at that point in time, perhaps now with some help from you, that scenario could be changed, and, and we would certainly like to proceed with that. The other, the other issue, of course, is that time is of the essence here, and the legislative process takes a long time, and we're, we're, of course, trying to work through the current situation and get, you know, meet the goal that we're trying to do, which is to have the landfill not expand any further.
Right.
Thank you.
Yeah, anything I can do to help? Just let me know.
Okay, I'll remember.
Yeah, thank you.
How is that the essence? You're exactly right.
It might be done in the context of the renewed and very strong interest in preparing for the, for the big earthquake. And clearly, this is one of those little pieces that should be addressed, and it can be addressed now to some extent.
Yeah. Did you, did you guys meet with Senator Boquist last time you guys circled around?
I believe so, and Senator Thompson, yeah, who is not, no longer-
Representative Thompson.
Representative, yes, I'm sorry, who's not in office now.
Yeah. Senator Boquist is now the chair of the Veterans in Emergency Preparedness Senate Committee.
Oh, oh.
And I think he's the only Republican that has a gavel right now, and, which is significant. And he's, he's our senator, so I think it'd be a good place to meet with. We can talk more about legislative strategy, and I would be, I think this is the next step, we need to move in that direction.
I'd just like to add something, Susan, for the Stop the Dump Coalition in your group, just to make sure that it's understood and it goes a record. I have to commend Council President Jeffries for wanting to help out. I also have to make sure that Stop the Dump, as part of my responsibility, Stop the Dump Coalition realizes that Council President Jeffries is not doing that as an official representative of the city of McMinnville. He's doing it with his own goodwill and his passion for the subject because it's not necessarily the official, we know what the official stance of the city of McMinnville is, so Kevin, I have to commend you-
I wouldn't deviate from that.
I know, I have, but I have to commend you for your passion on that and wanting to, wanting to help people in getting that resolved, so.
And secondly, I read in the New Register recently that Luba's decision has been remanded back to the county. Could you talk about that briefly, what that entails and what kind of, what's the history with that?
Do you want to talk about it? Do you want me to?
Yeah, let me try. I'm not the legal expert.
I'll interrupt him if he says something wrong.
Yeah, Luba remanded it back to the county based on the county's inadequate reckoning with the impact on farms. And apparently, according to our lawyer, it's a pretty strong, strongly worded remand.
And that was in reference to the berm expansion, or what was the issue on the table?
No, the current, the current application to expand, because the county basically approved, they had a three to two vote, a two to one vote-
Last spring.
Last spring, to approve it, and we appealed it to Luba, and Luba has responded now. And there was something, something else, there was, apparently it's fairly strongly worded, and it puts the county in the position of, well, first of all, Waste Management could appeal it to the Court of Appeals, but that seems unlikely. So it's remanded the county. The county has a choice of taking the existing evidence without any new input and trying to reword it, rephrase it to make it acceptable. But the way that Luba worded it, that's, that's going to be very difficult to do because the Waste Management had only one expert testifying about the lack of impact, and we had several farmers and several explicit impacts, and Luba criticized the way that the county had really shown favor to Waste Management's arguments over the ones that we presented. So what may happen is the county will reopen the hearing, reopen the issue, and there'll be new hearings, in which case more evidence can be presented, and it would seem that if Waste Management is going to make a case, they really need evidence to do that.
And the way I understand it, Kevin, I think you worded very well, is the remand was strictly not because of the berm, but because of the impact on agricultural enterprises surrounding the land around-
Yeah, exactly.
The farmland around the landfill.
If that was the specific issue too, where they were like, this, it almost seemed like it was written as an out for the commissioners, like, "You could vote this down because of this reason," and that reason was kind of ignored, it looks like, and that was put back to them to address that reason, so.
It'll be interesting to see how the county, I agree that they're going to have to open it back up for, I don't see how the county can, the way it was worded, I don't see how the county can get around with almost not opening it back up, so.
Thanks for that clarification. There's so many moving parts to this issue, and it's hard to keep track of all of it, but thank you.
Okay, Kelly.
I thought it was a very interesting report, and I greatly appreciate you taking the time to come and present it to us.
Thank you.
Larry?
Thank you very much for the update.
Thank you.
Okay, Remy?
I just, I just echo the gratitude. I feel like regardless of the fact that this council's come out with a very clear stance, having more and more information can only benefit all of us as we move forward, and I learned a lot, so thank you very much.
Scott?
And Susan and Brian, thank you. You know, the learning process, and this is an ongoing, and more is learned as time goes on, and so keeping us aware of that just heightens our awareness and our learning, and I think it helps support what we've done already.
Yes, it does, and it's a complex issue, and there's a lot of balls in the air.
Okay, again, Susan, Brian, thank you very much. I think, you know, our council is very big in, as you know, on the educational process, and we can't make decisions on information that we don't have or we misunderstand, and we really appreciate you at least coming to us and helping keep us educated on the various issues that are going on, and so thank you, thank you again.
Please feel free to let us know if you need more information.
Certainly will.
Thank you.
Okay, council, now we get to move on to item C under new business, and that's a Visit McMinnville Financial Overview from Executive Director Jeff Knapp, and it does say Committee Chair Aaron Stevenson, so are you both going to come forward? You're going to let Jeff handle it, Aaron?
I was just going to let Jeff take it.
Hey, you can sit in the audience, he's your executive director. You can sit in the audience if you want.
Just relax, Aaron.
Welcome, welcome, Jeff. It's nice to see you, your first council meeting.
Thank you. It's, it's an honor to be here. Sort of intimidating.
Do you have a copy of that presentation?
Excellent.
Is that one?
Wonderful.
Can you close the left part for a minute, Rose, so we can see more of the slide?
There you go.
There you go, thank you, Rose.
Great, and should I just give you the thumbs up when we-
I think so.
As we move forward? All right. My name is Jeff Knapp. I am the new executive director for Visit McMinnville. I reside at 1036 Northeast Cowles Street here in McMinnville, and I wanted to first start by thanking Mayor and City Council for having me speak on behalf of our board, and thank you all for all of the hard work and hours that have been put into launching Visit McMinnville. And I, you probably know well more than I do with my one month and two days on the job, how long the road that's been. So I just wanted to acknowledge a couple of our board members who are here. Aaron Stevenson, our chair with Third Street Flats, co-owner. Ty Rollins, back here, owner of Comfort Inn. And then our two city councillors, Scott Hill and Martha Meeker, who are both non-voting members on the board, thank you so much for all of your hard work. So my intention today is just, what we'll be going over is our annual business plan for fiscal year 2016, and it's really to serve as a, as a transparent business plan for tourism stakeholders here in the community. So I'm going to hit the high levels of these and go over the budget and the fiscal plan, and we'll skim over some of the details that you probably know very well, because I'm sure you're eager to get to Thanksgiving, so. We will, if we can advance, go even one more page. This is the table of contents that we will have. This will be up on our website for transparency with the community as we get that live in January, so if people have questions about what is Visit McMinnville and what are they doing, it'll be a good resource to share with them. So we'll go one more page and give you a quick overview of our vision, mission, purpose, and values. So this is a detailed account of who we are and how we operate and where we're going as a, as a destination marketing organization in a charitable 501(c)(6). So we'll go one more slide, and that really boils it down to who is Visit McMinnville. So Visit McMinnville is an innovative marketing organization dedicated to enhancing McMinnville's economy by attracting as many visitors as possible to the city, and once they're here, ensuring that those visitors spend as much money as possible with our local businesses.
That's, that's-
That is my goal, that is our goal.
No hidden agenda, right?
So, yeah, next, next slide, thank you. So you can think of us basically as a full-service marketing, PR, and advertising agency with one client, the McMinnville tourism industry. So that is kind of summing up who we are. So one of the things that's really appealing to me, and I'm sure to you as you came upon helping us find this model of an organization, is the transparency in how we measure success. So often with marketing, marketing, there's a lot of intangibles, and, you know, you make things look pretty, but is there really, how do you, how do you gauge that success? So we have some, these are the ways that we get, gauge success. So we do so by impacting, looking at blended metrics of rate and occupancy within the city of McMinnville, so the more people that are visiting us and staying in hotels more frequently and spending more money will result in an increase in our revenue, which will fund tourism. And the second component is, is really the marketing model, and we'll go into that a little bit next, and that is the measurement of traffic to our visitmcminnville.com website, and then referrals from that visitmcminnville.com website to local tourism stakeholders and local businesses. So go one more slide forward, and this really boils the whole thing down. So what we, at all of our marketing efforts that we will be marching forward with, whether it print, digital media, television commercials, all of those fun things up on the top that are funneling people down to the engine, are built to do one thing, and that is to drive traffic, drive people to our website through optimization of SEO, keywords, and any advertising that we have. So any advertisement will end with visitmcminnville.com, all efforts, channeling people to converting visits to our website to revenue for local businesses. So we want to be the first thing that pops up when you type in McMinnville Restaurant, or Oregon Wine, or there's a whole bunch of different, or aerospace museums. When you type those things up, we want you to come to our page, and we want to direct you as quickly as possible off of our website to local business and convert that to opportunities for people to capture and make money with their local tourism stakeholdings. So that being the model, we can go to the next slide here. I won't go through all of this because you've lived it, but I will point out the last few notes, which we can start in September with the hiring of me. I started October 21st, and where we're at now, we are up at the top right. We, in November of 2015, we've signed a lease for our temporary office space, which will be downtown, located between Third and Fourth Streets on Davis and the old telephone building, so we'll be moving in there in the next week or so. If you want to stop by and say hello, that's where you will find me. And then, last but not least, we are here this evening presenting our plan. So here's the plan. How, what are we doing this year? So we are, I'll start off by saying, we are going to be running quickly, so our intention is to throttle as much energy into marketing as fast as we can, as responsibly as we can with a lean team. So we'll go through what that looks like. So our fiscal year 2016 goals and objectives. We, goal number one, achieve 10% year-over-year growth in TLT collections. Two, achieve a 2.5 percentage point year-over-year growth in annualized citywide lodging occupancy. Launch a full-service website and generate a minimum of 250,000 visitors to that website. We are currently in building stages of that website with a local web designing company, 237 Marketing, and the backend of that website, which will optimize the SEO, is being framed out by Point B Advisors and Bend. So we'll have, we're approaching the website from sort of an opposite wave you would have a traditional website. Generally, you build websites to have people come and spend a lot of time exploring your website. We want you to get to our website, and then we want to effectively channel you to local businesses as fast as we can. So that framework will be critical. Recruit and hire a highly effective marketing manager, so that job has been posted last week, so if you know marketing managers, please send them our way. We currently have about 30 applicants, and we'll be diving into that at the end of, well, after the holiday. Produce an award-winning advertising campaign consisting of TV commercials, radio commercials, print advertisements, and digital advertisements. So we are in process to roll out with our first creative ads with, combined with our January launch of our website, so we are hoping to get maximum coverage as fast as we can. Where are we at? Design and launch compelling wine trail marketing promotion, so we're going to be putting some marketing into marketing the walkability and ease of staying in town for multiple days visiting our local wineries. Produce a 90-second cutting-edge destination marketing video, so we are currently contracted with a Bluechuck Media from Portland. They actually have two offices, one in Brooklyn, one in Portland, really cool, neat company, and they're contracted to catch all four seasons here and produce a 90-second video, which will have the first cut, I think, in April of that. You might have seen them around town, may or may not. Design and print a premium 12-page mini-guide to showcase McMinnville's tourism appeal and promote McMinnville as a year-round travel destination. As a, we are going to utilize these mini-guides in our marketing, both internally in print and around at all strategic tourism locations throughout Oregon. Contract a highly effective PR agency to generate positive media coverage in McMinnville or for McMinnville Tourism. We plan to launch and maintain a comprehensive social media marketing program. Currently, we are just operating Instagram, but we will see all of the other things go live here within the month, as far as Facebook, Google Plus, and those types of avenues, again, with the intent of driving people to the website, which we don't currently have yet, so. Work with the community partners to recruit meetings, conventions, athletic events, and other travel groups to McMinnville. This will be a key, I think, lot of opportunity here as far as potential new types of business for convention spaces and that type of thing here in McMinnville. And I have met with Ann at Evergreen about their facilities out there, and I think there's some potential locally at Linfield possibly. It's something that we are kind of lacking in the community, and I think that I'm excited to expand on how we can maybe bring some convention-type meeting spaces to town. If you have ideas, please let me know. Implement a highly effective, sophisticated, and transparent financial management program consistent with McMinnville's financial policies and procedures. This is critical as we are funded by tax dollars, that we operate at the highest level of fiduciary responsibility and transparency, and we've contracted Greenstone Financial, which is a great company that has a track record of, in this industry, and have also secured a local bookkeeper who I have worked with in the past, and she was brought on last week, so we're up and running financially, all good to go now. Work with community economic development partners to design and produce a bridge campaign to leverage Visit McMinnville's tourism promotion efforts to enhance communities' broader economic development efforts. So this is really coordinating a marketing campaign that bridges how Visit McMinnville, the MDA, MEDP, and the Downtown Association all work and defines what we do and how we all work together to, to build economic prosperity for the community. So we'll be working on that piece as well. We'll jump to there. One more thing that's not on here that I did want to bring up is our visitor center. So one thing that we, that was not covered in the plan, so currently, as you know, the visitor center is being operated by the chamber. Our executive board contracted a financial impact study to determine the costs and of opening and operating a visitor center in the first three years, and voted as a board not to open that visitor center this year. So I just wanted to make the council aware that, I've spoken with Nathan in the chamber, and we're, talks how we can support them moving that forward. I think it'll give us time to calculate the best location for that and how that visitor center will operate moving forward. So on to this, the nuts and bolts, so the budget, so how we've allocated our money. So for a brief recap- our money. So, for a brief recap, we benefit greatly, as you can see, from starting off fiscal year 16 with ceded capital from fiscal year 15 and prior. Essentially, we're beginning with a reserve of funds to support marketing growth over the next few years. Our board has adopted an aggressive deployment of our marketing dollars to generate as much bang for our buck as possible. So, we've reallocated dollars that we would have spent on operating a visitor center currently, and we'll be funneling all of those efforts into generating new, new visitors. So, we have an aggressive budget. That being said, it's going to be a challenge to, to spend all of that money. So, we will be moving into next year with a surplus, which is great, because as you see, we've started with sort of two years of funding at the beginning. If we're successful at doing so, we'll enter fiscal year 17 with a reserve of close to $150,000, and this will help maintain the marketing pace and impact created by essentially starting with two years of TLT revenue. So, the next slide is the nuts and bolts. I don't know that we need to go down line by line. Feel free to ask questions. But, in closing, it's a real dream job showing the world what makes McMinnville a special place to live. I, myself, have lived here seven years and made a conscious decision to start a family here and make this my community, and so, it's a real honor to do so with stewardship and reverence to the authenticity of McMinnville. So, thank you for your time. Let me know if you have questions.
Okay, Larry, let's start with you. Any questions, Jeff?
No, really looking forward to this, because, I mean, you've got your plate full, you've got a big agenda here, but having been in on some of the groundwork, I'm really, really excited about what's happening here. I think there's fantastic potential.
Thank you.
Kelly?
Thrilled with the sales and marketing budget you have here. Just sort of a curious, curious, on the building lease and the building maintenance seems really low. Did you get a heck of a deal?
I do have a good deal on rent right now. So, that was, yes. It is. I have a, we, we had budgeted high originally, because we were thinking we'd have to have a build-out or a large space, and I think our original model had more employees. So, we're going to run leaner as far as internal staff until we really flush out what those positions, how those opportunities are made evident. So, we're going to, we're going to run, put all of the money that we can into marketing.
Perfect. Go McMinnville.
Thank you.
Helen?
No questions.
Just as one that has been through the process for the good part of the year, you know, Erin, thank you for your leadership. I mean, without, you know, Jeff's here, and we're starting to take a breath and putting more on his shoulders, but your leadership and your passion to do what needs to happen. Ty, you're here, and you represent the board also. I'll tell you, it's been one of the most fantastic experiences I've had individually, and I've been on many, many boards over my, my career, and this is one that is passionate. But I'll tell you, there's no, there's no standing water, let's say. We're going down the rapids awfully fast, and to see this kind of quality of a business plan, and again, this was made for the council. This, this is their, this is their marching order for the year, and it's aggressive, and there's accountability every step of the way, you know, every step of the way. And I have no doubt that those hurdles will be surpassed by the end of 2016. And, so, I'm excited to be a part of it, excited to have Jeff on board and see our marketing director coming on, and then just watching this thing just help create more economic opportunity for this community, because it's a silent economic engine, let's say, that's going to bring so many benefits to this community. So, just comments, great job.
Ready?
I would largely echo what Scott said, and congratulations, congratulations, Jeff. And then also, having spoken with many other board members, also just really tip my hat to you, Erin, that your leadership has shown through the entire process, and there's no doubt that we wouldn't be here without you. So, thank you very much, and congratulations, Jeff, and thank you for all the work.
Just a couple of questions, or comments in closing, I think, you know, not only for Jeff, and we're so glad to have you on board, Jeff, but for Erin and the rest of the board. I think when our council decided to go this route, once we started getting our lodging tax money in, I'm so pleased to see that the board took active, and we're using the best of breed for financial accounting, you know, for marketing, for website design, for statistical captures, and we're doing it right from the beginning. I'm also very glad to see that we're actually going through 2016 with a, with a fiscal year, or with a surplus. I think, Visit McMinnville, as I've done when I opened up, day before yesterday, when I opened up my, just know when I opened up my Sunset Magazine, Right the Big O was a two-page advertisement that was just all pictures except it said, "Visit Bend" across both pages. I just could not keep myself from pulling that out and taping Visit McMinnville over and sending it to Doug LaPlaca, you know, just so he knows that we're after him now. And, but I think I have to hand it to, I really though want to, want to commend our council and our staff for supporting this all the way through, and our citizens and everything. There's no doubt in my mind that five years from now, we are going to have, if not, we'll put it this way, not if not, that we are going to have the best visitor, Visit McMinnville, or visit site of anybody in the West Coast, or at least the United, we'll, we'll stay with the United States, that's good enough. But, again, if this is any indication of the kind of material we're going to be putting out there public, both digitally and in print, we're well, we're well on our way. So, again, I'd like to thank council, and thank Erin, thank your board, and Jeff, thank you for accepting the job and coming on board, being a McMinnville resident. We really look forward to a long relationship, and it's just like, go.
One other comment, too, when you're done.
Yeah, go ahead, I'm done.
I just, I do want to let the members of council know that if you're ever in Bend to, and if you have an hour that you're not out skiing, or whatever you may be doing in Bend, Doug will take you in and show you the operation of Visit, of Visit Bend, and give you some insights. I know a few of us have had that opportunity. We've had an opportunity to have Jeff there for three, four days. Ty, I know you were there for a cross-country match, and you dropped in, and Erin, I think you've, so, it's an open door for any of us on the council that would like to take advantage of that. I know that's an open invitation.
Well, last time I told Doug, I told him, I said, he thinks the Bend Ale Trail is a big promotion. Wait till he sees our wine trail, and he'll have seen nothing. He'll have seen nothing. But, we do did the best of breed, and just like today, I saw advertisement, I'm sure we'll see them in some of, Visit Bend's thing with all the snowfall they had today in Bend. I think it's eight inches of snow downtown. By five, five o'clock, it was just more beautiful, and I just know with their staff and the staff we're going at Visit McMinnville, Visit Bend is not going to take this opportunity lightly. They're going to get some pictures of that. They're going to make use of that, and I expect Jeff, and when he gets his staff on board, and our board is going to seize, is just waiting to seize those kind of opportunities, and put them out there for Visit McMinnville. So, again, Jeff, it's great to have you here, and Erin, thank you and your board for everything you've done, so.
Thank you so much.
Do we need to accept this business plan, or?
I don't, I don't think, I don't think so, no.
It was just, it was just reporting to us. It was just in the bylaws.
Because we don't have anything to do with it. They're just, they're just their own organization, which we're glad of. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, that will take us now to ordinances. We have two ordinances on our, first one, ordinance number 4998, and that's granting a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise to Astound. And Martha, I'd like you to go over that, where we stand on that right now, what we talked about at our dinner meeting.
You bet. Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I'd like to point out Fred Miller. He's with Astound Broadband. He's been working with us for a while, and really great guy. He's been a good partner in this whole endeavor. And so, what is happening is Astound is in the family of Wave Business Solutions, and some of the folks may know Wave. They're a cable company that produces full services out of Washington, and they're moving into Oregon. But, right now, they're only talking about the Astound piece, which is the fiber provider. So, they're wishing to come to McMinnville, and much like we talked about last business council session, I believe, when we talked about Coastcom, they provide fiber for business. In this case, though, they're actually going to come and provide interior to McMinnville, and so, they will need a right, to be in the right ways, they'll need to get a franchise with us. But, we also look forward to, unlike Coastcom, we look forward to them doing business in town with us. So, right now, we're at, as far as I understand, that our lawyers got to within one word of a final agreement, and I think we're, we're going to dicker a little bit more. I think we're really close. I'm staring at Fred and putting like pressure on him right here. I just want to say that. But, no, we're really close.
Fred, we have some great hotels in Bend breakfast you can stay at tonight in McMinnville.
So, we'll just keep him over.
That's right.
We won't return him until he comes and does, you know, and finally finalize his agreement with him. But, I do anticipate that the easement, or excuse me, the franchise agreement that you have before you now is one that I think is solid to be offered to Astound. I would like to go ahead and offer that to them, if you would, and we may perhaps do just a first reading, because then I would like to wait for their formal response back before we proceed with the full second reading of the ordinance. But, I believe we could do that, be the fastest way to proceed, because Fred has been very patient with us. As a city, we've been, we've been in this about a year now, and then we finally got a hold of it in the last couple of 60 days, and said, we're really going to move it forward. So, they've been patient with us, and I appreciate that.
Okay. I think we did discuss that at dinner, and I concur with the city manager that at this time, what I think we should do is, ordinance 4998, we should go ahead and grant the non-exclusive telecommunications franchise to Astound, but only go through a first reading by city charter. We are required to have two readings, but we hold the second reading open until the next meeting to give staff, and our legal staff and our city staff and Astound the opportunity to come to the final contract terms or the final wording of the franchise. And then, with that said, the first thing we will do at our next meeting is, hopefully, we'll be able to have the second reading of the ordinance. So, if that sounds all right to everybody, what I'll do is I will have Walt read the first reading, and then we'll do a poll of the council. So, Walt, can you do the first reading, please?
Ordinance number 4998, an ordinance granting a non-exclusive telecommunications franchise to Astound Broadband LLC to be a Wave as grantee or franchiser.
Okay, that's the first, first reading. So, what I will, we, do we want to vote on that now? So, we'll vote on that. So, if I can get you to poll the council, Rose, and poll council president Jeffries' last, please.
Counselor Drabkin?
Aye.
Counselor Hill?
Aye.
Counselor Manke?
Aye.
Counselor Yoder?
Aye.
And council president Jeffries?
Aye.
Let the record show that ordinance number 4998, through its first reading, has passed the council unanimously, and if everything's done, that prior to, the prior discussions at our next council meeting, or whenever it's finalized, we will have the second reading of the ordinance before implementation. Thank you very much, Walt. So, I hope that, got, you got it?
Got it.
Just one word.
We're close.
Yeah, we're close. Okay, that takes us to our second ordinance tonight, and that's ordinance number 4997, an ordinance amending chapter 13 dot 12 dot 070 of the McMinnville Municipal Code, and that was ordinance 4987 regarding sewer user charges for monitored industrial and commercial users. And again, this is the second reading, so I will ask if there's any explanation needed, additional comments or explanation by staff, and if not, I will go ahead and have Walt do the second reading of this ordinance. So, Mike, do you have anything additional? Martha, do you have anything additional? So, Walt, will you go ahead and do the second reading of this ordinance, please?
Ordinance number 4987, an ordinance amending chapter 13 point 12 point 070 of the McMinnville Municipal Code. Ordinance number 4987 regarding sewer user charges for monitored industrial commercial users.
Okay, that was the second reading. As you remember, the reason we had to have a second reading, because it did not pass unanimously at our last reading. So, with that second reading, it is now all ready to go, and no vote is, no vote is required, no vote is required. So.
No, I'd go ahead and have a second.
Oh, we need to have a second vote on the second reading? Thank you. Walt, so, again, Rose, you poll the council, and call council president Jeffries' last.
Thank you. Counselor Drabkin?
Aye.
Counselor Hill?
Aye.
Counselor Manke?
Aye.
Counselor Yoder?
Aye.
And council president Jeffries?
Aye.
Let the record show that ordinance number 4997 has passed the council unanimously at the second reading. So, thank you very much, council.
Did it pass unanimously?
No.
At the second, at the second, the second reading.
Okay, so we've been.
The second reading, right. Okay, resolution, our first resolution is resolution number 2015 dash 57, and this established revised sanitary sewer user fees, and it does repeal resolution 2014 dash 2. So, Michael, I'll turn it over to you on this one.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council, and I refer you to the brief staff report that's in your packet, and remind you that this resolution implements the updated financial plan that you considered at your prior council meetings. This does reflect an overall 2.8% increase, but the actual increase will vary based on customer class, and you'll recall that the rate equity portion of the study that you approved will occur over a four-year period. So, this resolution will go in effect January 1st, and unless there are any questions, staff would recommend that you adopt the resolution as presented.
Hey, do we have any questions of staff? Hearing none, what we will do is, I will entertain a motion that we approve resolution number 2015 dash 57.
So moved.
So moved by Counsel Manke. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counsel Yoder. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it, oh, aye, we did have, we did have one. We did have one. So, let the record show that resolution number 2015 dash 57 has passed the council with affirmances, except one, one in the negative from, from Counselor.
Drabkin.
Drabkin, Remy. Sorry, I kind of ignored you down there, Remy. So, let the record reflect, reflect that. So, that'll take us to our next resolution. That's resolution 2015 dash 58, and that's a resolution approving task order number one to the personal services contract for the design of the Fifth Street and Alpine Avenue Transportation Bond Measure projects. I just want to reiterate, we did have some conversations at the dinner meeting regarding a concern that I had regarding that that work agreement specifically task number five, as it pertains to subtask 5.1 regarding, no wording in there regarding the potential of a roundabout to replace a signalized intersection. But, that being said, Mike, I'll let you go through the explanation on that, and what our option is, and what we hopefully will do with this. So, Michael, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. I'll refer you to the brief staff report, as well as the proposed task order to HDR Engineering's contract that is contained in your packet. As the mayor noted, this scope of work is for Fifth Street and for Alpine Avenue to move us from where we are now with 30% design through bidding of the contract next calendar year. As the mayor noted, this scope of work anticipates a traffic signal at the Fifth and Lafayette intersection. As you know, their concept of a roundabout was presented to the council at your prior meeting. We have committed to reviewing and preparing a pro and con list for you regarding the roundabout, considering both costs, traffic flow, and property impacts, and I expect to present that to you at a subsequent council meeting. This task order that's before you does not preclude the council from deciding to move forward with a roundabout, and if that were the case, we'd bring back to you an amended scope of work that would reflect the roundabout work instead of a traffic signal. HDR has indicated that the cost to do the design of a roundabout, the plan sheets and the design work would be the same, and so, it would be just a scope of work change and not a cost change to their contract. So, this work does not, also does not include the potential expansion of the Alpine Avenue project that both the Mirror Act Committee and the council is considering. If we were to expand that scope of work, we would, again, amend this task order to include the additional design services for an increased scope of work on Alpine Avenue. So, with that, and unless there are any additional questions from the council, we'd recommend that you adopt the resolution approving task order number one to the contract with HDR Engineering in the amount of $435,600, and, let me put my reading glasses on, $82.
Okay, any questions? Let's start with you, Remy. Any questions? Okay, any questions, let's start with you, Remy, any questions? Scott?
No.
Kevin?
Nope.
Kelly, none, Larry?
None.
Again, based on discussions we had at our dinner, dinner meeting, and staff's recommendation, I feel comfortable that we should move forward with resolution number 2015 dash fifty-eight. So that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Counselor Drabkin, seconded by Counselor Hill. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that resolution number 2015 dash fifty-eight passed the council unanimously of those members present.
And Mayor, I'd just like to recognize Mike for all of his work, and Doug Montgomery, and then putting on Walt's other hat on the, as the Chair of the Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. Walt has really helped us in that direction, too. So again, it's just another, I would say, very successful partnering that's happened with the bond money for transportation, urban renewal, and advisory committees that are working well.
Thank you, Scott. I think, well, taking, I'm just wondering if we shouldn't keep Walt around for a while, I mean Henderson House, this project, Alpine Project. Walt, where are you finding this time? No, no comment.
Pass my wife.
Shelly, I'm sure Shelly will tell us, right? That takes us on to our next resolution, that's resolution 2015 dash fifty-nine, and that's awarding the contract for sanitary sewer flow monitoring and inflow and infiltration assessment. Mike?
Thank you again, Mayor, members of the council. Again, you have a brief staff report in your packet, as well as a draft resolution and a proposed scope of work related to sanitary sewer flow monitoring and inflow and infiltration assessment. As the council knows, the community has invested a significant amount of resources in rehabilitating our sanitary sewer system. That's been over the last twenty years. More specifically, in 2008, you adopted an updated master plan that continued an emphasis on rehabilitating old sewer pipes to remove inflow and infiltration. We've completed a number of those projects since 2008, and what this work will do is allow us to monitor flows in those basins that we've done work, compare those flows to pre-work flows, and report back to you on the progress we're making on rehabilitating the sanitary sewer system. So unless there are any questions, the staff would recommend that you adopt the resolution awarding that work to C H two M Hill in the amount of sixty-one thousand seven hundred dollars.
Mike, I have one question. Which basins exactly will be, of all the basins we've done or we're doing, which basins will we be monitoring, do you know, off the top of your head?
So we've done work in both the downtown basin and in the high school basin, and I also believe we've done some work a little farther west as well. So there are a number of points in the system where we had monitors when we did the 2008 master plan. We'll put monitors back in those same places and be able to compare flows pre and post rehab.
Okay, thanks, Mike. So we have a report from staff requesting that we approve resolution number 2015 dash fifty-nine. So if there are any more questions of staff, if not, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Counselor Yoder, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Drabkin, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that resolution 2015 dash fifty-nine has passed the council again unanimously with those members present. So that'll take us to our next resolution, that's resolution number 2015 dash sixty, approving into a contract with AHA Consulting Incorporated. And Scott, I believe you're going to take this one.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In September, the city of McMenville released a request for a proposal to design, build, and host a new website to replace its current site built in 2005. Several companies with a gross ranging from fourteen thousand to thirty-seven thousand dollars responded, and after carefully vetting of the proposals on providing capabilities and pricing, unless there are any questions from the council, the city staff is recommending AHA Consulting, a municipal web design company based in McMenville.
Thank you, Scott. Martha, any more additional comments?
No, I really appreciate, I mean, the vetting was, well, first of all, I appreciate the response that we got. We did, we got, we got seven very, I think, very good proposals. Several of the proposals had multiple companies come together to do one proposal. So we had very good response to our website request for proposals. Appreciated the opportunity to run through a vetting board with some of the folks internal to the city as well. And the ultimate candidate we got with AHA was by, a significant jump in capability, and they were also the lowest cost. Rarely do those two come together. At first, I was actually, I was, I was like, no, they're selling us something. This is, this is not, this is not, cannot be as good as what it comes to be. But I do think, because they, they work with forty cities internal to Oregon, they also work with cities in around, I mean, they have facilities on the East Coast, they have facilities on the West Coast, and mid, and the Midwest as well. When we talk about hosting services, they will host our website on three different locations in the United States, so, and we also have the service availability hours that go along with having somebody open early on the East Coast and late on the West Coast. So it's a very, I think it's an exciting opportunity for us to join with them, and I look forward to, just like JW talked about back there, the ability to drive our website and to get so many more resources on that website. Now, this, this is the base website, but I look forward to hanging everything from bill pay to our MUD code on here. It will give us the ability to do things, I think, expand our services, and to get faster at providing services when we hear a request for it.
Thank you, Martha. I think, I know we talked about it at our dinner meeting, what I find really amazing was in the council's write-up, for those that are in the audience, that as good of a company as AHA is, based out of Lake Oswego with companies all over the United States, I find it amazing that one of the owners of the company is actually a McMenville High School graduate, and her parents still reside here in McMenville. So for those three facts to come together, I think we're very fortunate, but I'm really looking forward to implementation of the base system and all the different functionality in the future it'll give us as we expand the base system. And I think the comments that JW made regarding some of the things we should do, I think that plays right into what we're going to be doing in the future. So that being said, we have a resolution in front of us, that's resolution 2015 dash sixty, approving, entering into a contract with AHA Consulting Incorporated. So that being, that being said, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
So moved by Counselor Manke, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hill, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that resolution 2015 dash sixty, approving, entering into a contract with AHA Consulting, has been approved unanimously of those members present. Thank you, Martha, Scott, thank you very much. Resolution 2015 dash sixty-one, awarding the execution of an easement agreement with Wave Business Solutions. We talked a little bit about the options for this, since we have not had a second reading for Astound Communications. I think what we discussed is, we would, could go ahead and vote on this and approve this, and it would only become effective when the second reading of the, of our ordinance is effective. Is that correct, Mr. Attorney? Is it the attorney?
Yes.
Okay, so.
It won't be signed until that.
It won't be signed until that's done. So that being said, are there any questions from the council regarding the execution of the easement agreement with Wave Business? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Council President Jeffries, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Counselor Hill, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The record show that resolution number 2015 dash sixty-one, awarding the execution of an easement agreement with Wave Business Solutions LLC has been passed by the members present. Okay, that takes us to advice and information items, and first things we have, a report from councillors on committee and board assignments. So let's start with you, Remy, is there anything you'd like to talk about or bring up?
I'm sure the first meeting of the Affordable Housing Task Force, put together by our city manager, will be in this upcoming, within two weeks.
Well, that's good, been making great progress. Thank you, Martha, and thank you, Remy. Anything else you'd like to bring up, Remy?
No, thank you, sir.
Okay, Scott?
Visit McMenville met this last week in preparation for their presentation tonight, with board acceptance of the business plan and the financials and all that we heard this evening. We also are McMenville Urban Renewal Advisory Committee. You've heard from them over this last month quite a bit, and we're dispensing of our meeting for December, will start up again in January.
Okay, thank you very much. Scott, let's go down to you, Larry.
The Parkway Committee met last week, Mayor can probably tell you more, but the majority of discussion was centered around the, what's going on with the Phase Two, so to speak, of the bypass which goes up to the top of X Hill, and the potential building that's going on in development of that property before the bypass goes through. So we were, we spent quite a bit of time talking about that, and also the bypass has been added in the federal register, it's in committee, it's not official yet. There's a House and a Senate plan, and they got to put the two together. To put it on, in the federal register, whereas, give us an opportunity for a bigger pot of funds to draw from, potentially, so.
Yeah, what, what that basically means is the, the House Committee passed, passed the bill, a House bill that designates a large pot of funding that goes to a specific port of the surface transportation, it's what they call high priority corridors, traffic corridors for freight and economic development. And the House has their own bill that's a little bit different, and it went to the committees and the, both the House Committee and the, through the work of our legislators, and the Senate Committee through the head of the Senate Transportation Committee from Pennsylvania, and also due to, because of Senator Wyden and Senator Merkley, was added to, the bypass project was added to that now, and the nice thing about it is Senator Wyden is a conferee to the committee, which is very important that you're a conferee to the committee, because you get some more decision-making power. So hopefully if that, they remedy, then come to one common bill between those that can pass both, it does open up the potential, a lot more funding for the, for the bypass from the federal level as a high priority, as a high priority corridor. So we're making progress, and it's getting there. So, thank you very much, Larry. Kelly?
Whycom, there's been a number of staffing changes there, Janice is retiring officially at the end of this month, and Patty will be taking over by mid-December. Janice will be staying on to work on a contractual basis, and I believe there's a new gentleman that's also working with her.
And do you remember, Kelly, how long Patty has been with the agency?
Seven or eight years.
I think it's about eight years, very good, good person.
Very good, she should really do well. There was also discussion of a potential new tower as part of the Ycom circle over in the Dundee Hills that would provide better connectivity for the, the radio system, so.
Okay, anything else, Kelly?
Nope.
Thanks. Kevin?
Just a reminder to everyone about the League of, not League of Organs, the Council of Governments, thank you, annual dinner, which is up in January. Do you remember the date for that, Rose?
I don't. Is it the twenty-first? I don't know why that number.
I'm glad you guys are all prepared to get the announcement, and I'm not, so.
Just because you're on the board, you're not going to listen, Kevin.
It is the twenty-seventh of January, six o'clock at Evergreen.
That's it. Glad you have your planner, Scott. Yep, never fail. And as you all know, I'm the Chair of COG this year, and so I have to select an individual or a project or an organization for the award, and I've been racking my brain trying to find, a lot of, a lot of ideas come into my head, and I can always find a reason, maybe, maybe somebody else might be better suited. So any nominations you have, any ideas, please email me and give me your thoughts, because I, we're going to have the, the meeting here coming up pretty soon where we decide who gets the awards, and I, and I want to go in there with a really good idea who I'm going to give it to.
Yeah, I think there's a couple, if you, if you don't know what the awards are, I'm sure if you contact our local Council of Governments representative, or maybe, they'll send you another list of what the reward, what the awards are, and who qualifies, and everything like that.
As the Chair, I can, I can pick anything I want.
That's right.
There's no qualifications other than that's what I want to do.
Because you're the Chair.
Because I'm the Chair. Exactly, they, they reserve an award for the Chair to give out, so there's nothing that I won't entertain, so.
Yep.
Email me. And that goes for everyone in the audience, too, I just, I want, I want recommendations.
Yep, anybody in the audience that wants to recommend, or staff, too, anything you'd like to recommend, that I'm sure Kevin would appreciate it. Anything else, Kevin, you have?
That's it.
I don't have anything else, just to let you know, the League of Oregon Cities, that we're having our board training in December, and we're actually having another work group meeting, if you've been keeping up in the Portland papers or in the media right now, there's issues or potential issues with the city of Lapine, and whether they can or cannot tax medical marijuana, that's going to be, I think, a hot topic, and it's going to require some clarification in the court system.
Is there another city that was trying to do that as well?
They decided not to because of the potentials it would bring, but Lapine decided to move forward on it, so League of Oregon Cities is really keeping up on that one. I think that's going to be a far-fetched impact. So if you see anything, or if you go to the League of Oregon Cities website, you can read everything you ever wanted to know about medical marijuana taxation and everything. Sean's done a great job, and Mike McCauley is putting some articles out there, so. Okay, let's move on then. Scott, do you have anything else for us tonight?
In terms of updates, the Department has directed the council's 2015 rules to reject them, we are, we're, we're, so, on feedback, we should start our course the next seven years, and, 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 us, get a data, so we can make sure we're keeping on top this year, and, 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 and,